In favor of our please rise for the prayer and our closing.
Dear Heavenly Father, through your grace we gather together this evening asking for your guidance as we make decisions which affect our community and its children. As we enter our last quarter of the school year, we pray for our students, their parents, and our teachers. Give all of them the energy and enthusiasm to end this year of teaching and learning at the same level we experienced in August with the start of the new school year. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Warren, we leave some prayers, please.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Foche, roll call, please.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Longham.
Here.
Mr. Smith and out with us, Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. First of all, we'd like to wish a happy birthday to Ms. Lee Bowman. Happy birthday!
Happy Birthday!
Hope you have many more.
Okay.
Good.
But I'll...
I like to take this opportunity right now just to congratulate a few people in our school district. Right now, the Chalmers did the High Kicks Championship for Shamet. And Jill Mitchell, she's doing a fantastic job, you know, with that group of girls. And just a round of applause for them, please. Then also, Lacoste, he has great news. Lacoste, for the Student of the Year over there, he went to regional. And so, we'd like to congratulate Rami Dadi for the conference that he's making right now, and we'll soon find out everything that goes on with him. So, congratulations. Now, go with the presentation. They have a resolution. I have a resolution for Dr. Henderson Lewis. Ms. Foche, will you take it from here, please?
Yeah, I guess we could just read it at the regular board meeting.
Sure.
But the school system in Orleans had requested Dr. Lewis is going to be leaving the Orleans Parish School System and moving on, and there will be a little celebration for him at their next board meeting. So, they asked if we would pass a resolution for him here with us. So, we prepared one for you, and we can read it into the minutes at our regular board meeting.
Right. Yeah, because Dr. Lewis, you know, he grew up in our school district. You know, he went to the grammar school here, he taught here, you know, then became a school board member, you know, or was counselor, too, you know, at one time, at AJ. And then all of a sudden, thinks, huh? No? Okay. But no, no, he was well-known in the parish here, you know, for his educational abilities that he has. And so, he's retiring now. And so, we give him... My hat goes off to the man because he's done some great things for the kids in St. Bernard Parish. So, if the kids would just follow his way, this parish would be great. So, thank you. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, it was an honor and a pleasure to serve with Dr. Lewis, Dr. Henderson Lewis on the school board. And I would be happy to make the motion to send that to the full board with the recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Campbell?
I just want to mention, I recall having Henderson as a student, two classes, the first period and the last period of the same day, two different subjects. It weren't the same subject.
Yeah. But he was a terrific board member for 11 years here, you know, on our board, and he did a lot of great things.
And I'm sure we'll talk a little bit about him next week. But he, after he went through our school system in college, he came back and he taught at Andrew Jackson High School as a math teacher. And then, we moved him in the central office as a curriculum coordinator, and then, of course, Katrina hit.
Right.
And everyone got scattered. And he went on to build an incredible career in the Algiers Charter School Association, and then, in East Feliciano, and then, Orleans Parish. And of course, you know, he served as a school board member here. So, he's a fine, fine young man, and he's still young. He's not retiring, retiring. He's just moving on to other opportunities as well. So, we'll read that in next week.
Yeah, but it's well-deserved. Okay. So, we move on to education committee. Ms. White?
Hi, thank you. Yes, 3.1, we have the Head Start Continuation Application and Update. And I think, Ms. Foche, you're gonna do that for us?
Um, yeah. Dr. Raviotta, you know, the committee meeting was originally scheduled last week. We moved it back a week. So, at that point, I'm just gonna do a very brief presentation of his very large pack. He will be here next week to answer any specific questions you would have that I may not cover. But he's going to meet with Policy Council for Head Start on March 17th to review the application for their approval. And he has the entire series of handouts here for you. And I'll just go over some of the high points of this. For the 22-23 school year, we'll again devote funding toward preserving our universal four-year-old program because a Head Start funding is an integral part. It funds 112 slots in our four-year-old program. And the other slots are funded through a combination of other sources, Title I, AG Educational Excellence Fund, IDEA. And then, we put local dollars in to make it a universal program for all four years in, all four-year-olds in St. Bernard Parish. We have actual Head Start classes in five of our seven elementary schools, yet we have all, in all seven of our elementary schools, complete four-year-old programs through the other funding sources as well. But speaking directly about the Head Start application, if you take a look at handout 3.1, which you see, we're funded for 112 students, which is the same as last year. The federal contribution from Head Start is $974,768, which is a little over $11,000 increase from last year's grant. Fifteen, about $15,000 of that is obligated for training and technical assistance. And the remaining monies go to salaries, benefits, supplies, child liability, insurance, local travel for the children, professional development activities, field trips, and such. So, the next several pages describe the actual detailed line items of the budget itself. So, if you do go through this, you're seeing how we fund each of the five sections of Head Start that we have servicing those 112 students. So, it's an all-encompassing program. All right, if you take a look at 3.1B, which follows it, after the budget pages, is a program narrative that's broken down into three sections that's required by the federal government. With the move to a five-year application process, the baseline application narrative we're required to provide two years ago was expanded to include a full explanation of all parts of the program. So, for this year and the next two years, we need to submit an abbreviated continuation application narrative. So, we only need to include any additions or deletions or revisions to our program's goals and objectives, as well as any changes to the subsections. So, in Section 1, we've provided the update to our goals. We've added a seventh goal in the program this year to address the mental and physical well-being of our employees, to do a better job to enable us to meet the demands, you know, of all of our students. So, we're finding that is an integral part of the program that we need to provide for our students. In Section 2, on page 9, you're going to see the budget narrative, explaining the breakdown for each of those budget categories. And at the end of the narrative, you'll see how the school system meets the 20% in-kind contribution required by the federal government. So, as it does with all of these federal funds and grants that come down, we are required to do an in-kind contribution. So, we provide transportation. We provide assessment services for the four-year-old program. We provide a lot of the ancillary services other than just the salaries and benefits of the teachers and the paraprofessionals who work within those Head Start classrooms. That's why it's so good to have a program that's funded by the school system so that we can provide those additional wraparound and ancillary services, you know, for our students and their families. I'd like to talk a little bit about the mid-year Head Start student program. So, if you look at handout 3.1C, which follows right behind it, this is our host's recent data supporting or showing the progress of our Head Start students from their fall assessments conducted in September to the winter assessment conducted in February. And so, you'll notice a steady progress made by our students in all six of the components listed. So, you see the percentage of students meeting it in the fall semester, and then the increase that we just did with the winter assessment in February. So, you can, I was wondering what that means. You can see a significant increase in each of those categories that we assess and measure for our four-year-olds. And as we always do, we'll conduct an end-of-the-year assessment in late April or in early May. And the results of these assessments help us, as we self-reflect each year and take a look at them, to see how we can improve the teaching and learning in the classroom. And then, that guides us in what we have to do to make sure that our four-year-olds are actually ready for kindergarten. And just as a reminder, you recall that we provide each of you with a monthly financial report, medical, physical immunization report, the enrollment report, and the food services report. And we do that on a monthly basis when we send out that board news to you with our monthly agenda. And then, lastly, he has included a copy of the flyer that we distribute to all the elementary school children and the childcare centers in our parish referencing our preschool registration, which is beginning in April. We're also placing that information on our district website, our Facebook page, as well as the newspaper and Penn TV. So, parents may download a copy of the application from the website, or pick up the application from either our central office or at the Joe Davies Preschool Center office. So, due to COVID concerns, they'll need to call the preschool to set up an appointment to register their children throughout the coming months. So, we're gonna do the preschool or the four-year-old registrations by appointment. So, all you have to do is download, fill out the application, call for the appointment, and sit down with our people and register your child for our four-year-old program for next school year. That was a really brief overview because it's really pretty much the same each year in terms of what the fund is and the application is. And I'll answer any questions that you might have concerning the Head Start Continuation Application.
Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Ms. Foche. Oh, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have a question. I'm sorry. Well, once again, I'd like to thank Dr. Rafa's very comprehensive package. It includes pretty much everything in it that Ms. Foche's talking about, and then some. One question I do have is, is this an increase in funding over the last year?
About $11,000.
About $11,000.
Not much. So, it's a very slight increase, and most of that is meant to do the technical assistance training. And in a lot of Head Start centers that are not in school systems, the pay differential is significant. We pay our Head Start teachers, they're all certified teachers, and we pay them on our certified teacher scale, just as we pay all of our other teachers. And in many cases, Head Start centers that may not be run by school systems may not do the same things. They each have their different pay structures. So, that $11,000 will go into less of a subsidization with our local dollars as we, you know, fund the program at the same level that we do the K-12 program.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just, we're very fortunate to have a universal four-program in St. Bernard Parish. We've said that a thousand times. So, I'll be glad to make the motion to send the Head Start application, continuing application to the full board with the recommendation.
Do we have a second? Okay, Diana, second it. All right, take a vote now?
Yeah. And I just want to mention that Ms. White is now on the Policy Council. So, she attends these meetings and is the school board's representative on the Head Start Policy Council.
Yes, I'm learning a lot about it. How it's changed since my children were little, I tell you that. And they're so lucky, the people, you know, the parents are so lucky to have that, you know, free dental and things like that. And I mean, it just blew me away when I saw everything that we're doing. So, thank you. And I guess now we'll take a vote, all in favor to send a continuation application?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Foche. Back to you, Mr. England.
Thank you, Ms. White. This is a personnel items, personal changes for March 2022. So, it's in packets for information purposes only. But Ms. Nysor, I see some retirements. I know you like to do that thing. You like to talk about these people.
Thank you, Mr. England. Yes, it's nice to see people be able to retire. But it's also sad because we're losing wonderful people who have given so many years to our students here in St. Bernard Parish. And we will, very lucky to have each and every one of them with us. And retiring from Shamet High is Derek Tillman, Sheralan Luna from Smith Elementary. And then, we have Nancy Mills from Araby Elementary, and Linda Ropa from the Transportation Office. And I know Linda's been with us many, many years, and Derek Tillman, each and every of, every one of them. And just, I want to wish each and every one of these individuals a very happy, healthy retirement, and to thank them for their many years of service to us.
All right, definitely, definitely.
And to our, but particularly to our students. Thank you.
It's well-deserving. And Linda, I went to, we went to high school together. It's gone back a long time. So, I wish them all well in their future endeavors. Okay.
The name of the last page, is that a resignation or is that a retirement?
Resignation.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay. The next item's gonna be insurance. Mr. Egan?
Yes. 5.1, property insurance renewal.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Banana, glad to have you here, Mr. Banana.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. England. We here, as you know, annually, we renew our property insurance policy for the coming year, starting in April of 2022 through the end of March of 2023, is what our policy term is. And as you can see, Mr. Clemmons is unable to be here today, but we're fortunate enough to have Mr. Max Zimmer from Casualty Insurance Consultants. He's an insurance broker that works with Mr. Clemmons. He does a lot of the behind-the-scenes work. He doesn't get the glamour of being able to come to the meeting often. Richie gets that. But we're fortunate to have him here to answer technical questions. But basically, in your package, you have a summary of the results of what Mr. Zimmer and Mr. Clemmons have done in gathering information for renewal of our policy. And in the first exhibit, the first spreadsheet, it shows several columns. The first column is our current policy that we have in place right now. It's getting ready to begin. And following us, several options. Now, as you can see, due to the recent disasters and the nature of the market, we're having a market increase in premiums this year, as we had pretty much been expecting. But we have several options for you. Our currently, our current policy covers name storm losses up to $30 million with a 5% deductible, and $150 million on all other risks, not name storm risks, damages. And following that, the next two columns have the same 5% and $30 million name storm deductible, but it also has a deduction to $100 million in the first column for all other risks, and the second column maintains the $150 million. Now, the following two columns have the same limits, except it raises the deductible value to 7.5% rather than 5%. So, there's a greater acceptance of some of the risk on those name storms. And the last two columns is a 10% increase in the 10% deductible, which is another increase in those. And as you can see on the line that says annual premium, those are the annual premiums for these different options. So, if we retain our current structure of $150 million for all losses, $30 million for a name storm with a 5%, we will have a million-dollar increase in our premium to $2.6 million. If we, if we increase our deductible amount, the corresponding premiums will go down, as you see in the following columns. Of course, the greatest decrease will be if we have the highest deductible amount. So, as you can see, we're all gonna have an increase, no matter what we do. But we have scoured the market, all these gentlemen have scoured the market, and Mr. Zimmer can speak to that in a second. But our recommendation to you tonight is going to be to go with column F, which maintains the $30 million name storm coverage, which is what we're required to do by FEMA regulations, as well as $150 million, $50 million for all losses. And that would be a premium of $2.5 million, $2,524,142, which is an increase of $876,038. It maintains the current coverage we have. It gives us a higher deductible. But for those name storms, FEMA will come in and cover the deductible amounts. So, even though we'll have a higher deductible on our regular policy, FEMA should come in and cover those deductible amounts for us. So, our recommendation is that. I'm gonna ask Mr. Zimmer to come up. He can tell you the process they've gone through, a little about the market, and how they've approached companies to give us these quotes.
Thank you, Derek.
And while he's coming up, you know, Mr. Clemmons, again, the meeting he thought was last week. So, he is out of town right now. He'll be returning Monday, and he will be here for the regular board meeting. But, Mr. Zimmer, I've known him for years and years and years. He's also worked very closely in this process as well. So, he's here to answer any questions tonight and to talk about the process. Mr. Clemmons will be here next Tuesday.
President Glave, Superintendent Vitter, and board members, thank you for the opportunity of allowing me to stand up for Mr. Ritchie tonight and answer any questions that you guys may have. My name's Max Zimmer. My company, Casualty Insurance Consultants, is part of a team that works in conjunction with your local retail agent and your staff to provide the property and casualty insurance programs for St. Bernard Parish School Board. We've actually been part of your team for property and casualty coverages for over 25 years. So, tonight, we're here to stand in for Ritchie and answer any questions that you might have about the 2022 renewals. What about that? Do we have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Zimmer, do you see, foresee these premiums going up each and every year now?
No. We had similar, always seems like the worst one for the one you're in right now. But after Katrina, we had similar, if not worse. We had very, very little capacity. Premiums were sky-high. That's if you could even buy it at any price. The rates that we had around Katrina were about $1.20. We steadily came down through the years as the market starts to soften up, availability and capacity becomes more available. And the rates accordingly went down so we could buy more coverage. They went down 96, 78, 74, 66, 51, 37, 32, 29, 25, 23, 24. We started to get a little bounce back up, 25, 20, another 26, 28, 32, and this year, unfortunately, all the way up to 51 cents. But we're a lot better than we were after Katrina. At $1.20, I know that doesn't help too much with the amount of money that we're talking about. Because in conjunction with the rate increases, you have significant value increases.
Values.
Yeah. We're at 480 something, almost a half a billion dollars in property values that we're insuring.
What can the Louisiana Insurance Commission can do about this? You know, it keeps on going up. It's gonna price people out of the market.
Well, it's already there.
Right.
And it's not just you guys. It's everybody that we deal with. You have a certain budget restrictions, and you can only pay so much money for coverage. We are lucky to be able to manipulate around with you having the benefit of Katrina stepping in, FEMA, excuse you, stepping in for some of the gaps in coverage that you may not buy now until things soften up. The commissioner himself, he does everything he can. And he puts restrictions, and he tries to make it as smooth and easy. But he can't control London, who basically controls the cost of reinsurance that these companies actually purchase. Companies only keep maybe the first $10 million or so in their company, and then, they reinsure, and most of that goes to the loyalties of London. Well, because of all the catastrophes, not just here, but all over the country.
Right.
What we call the names in London are becoming more and more restrictive about how much money they want to put up. And that controls the capacity, supply and demand. The less capacity you got, the more the rates are gonna go up to take care of it. So, he can't, he can't do very... So he, he can't very, he can't do very much to control that.
Guess it's putting hardship on a lot of people in the interstate of Louisiana. I can tell you that right now. So, but I thank you though, Mr. Zimmer. Mr. Egan, back to you.
Anyone that had any further questions?
I have a question for Dave. So Dave, our, uh, in order to keep, uh, our FEMA, keep them happy, we have to do the F, is it?
Well, all of them have thirty million dollar name storm requirement. FEMA requires you to carry enough name storm insurance to cover what they funded in wind losses in, in the past. And for Hurricane Katrina, that's the level of our wind losses that FEMA funded. So we're required every year in order to be eligible for FEMA, for future FEMA participation, to carry at least thirty million dollars in name storm coverage uh, to fulfill our requirement under FEMA regulations. Now, we also are carrying a hundred and fifty million for non FEMA, non-name storms. So if there's any other disaster that happens, we're covered. And that, the cost of that coverage is a lot less than the name storm coverage, because that seems to be where the biggest cost for, I guess, these insurance, insurers are. But, um, that is our FEMA requirement. That's what we have to fund every year. If we don't maintain that level of name storm coverage, then FEMA could deny us benefits in the future if there's a future disaster, name storm.
So in order to be in compliance with them and to get our deductible back, right?
Correct, correct.
The eighty, or, yeah, whatever, what are we coming up with our deductible? We have to, whatever we're coming up with, uh.
Right, the deductible is based on the value of the building. So whatever, like, for instance, in Hurricane Zeta, the roof of St. Bernard Middle School was torn off as part of the storm. Well, due to the value of St. Bernard Middle School, our deductible, our name storm deductible for that building alone was eight hundred thousand dollars. So the insurance covered everything other than the deductible, but FEMA came in and covered the deductible. Up to that point, we had to, we had to match with the twenty-five percent. It was seventy-five, twenty-five percent. But, uh, FEMA did come in and cover that deductible. And in the future storms, it would do the same, as long as we maintain the level of insurance that we're required to.
You see, when we did our big rebuilding program after Katrina, like Mrs. Zimmer mentioned, we have almost a half a billion dollars in assets the buildings are worth, and, um, which is significant. But when we did the FEMA, um, reimbursements, we got them to write the project worksheets with lesser damage from wind as opposed to flood. So when we look in at this thirty million dollars that FEMA is requiring that we cover district-wide, that was really, it was twenty-some odd million dollars of actual wind coverage, uh, wind damage we got them to do, and the rest was attributed to the floods. Had more been attributed to the wind situation, that name storm amount would have had to increase to whatever they paid us that was attributable to wind damage. So that's one benefit that we've got coming into this. And then when David was talking about, say, for example, the St. Bernard roof, you have your insurance in the aggregate, but they're building by building. So if, you know, that eight hundred thousand dollars that we talked about, um, which was the deductible on St. Bernard Middle, that building then, I think, I looked at the math a little, that's five percent, right? So it's maybe about sixteen million dollars it was valued at, twelve, sixteen million dollars. So if we have one building, then it's gonna be, now if we go with the recommendation that we're proposing, the deductible, say it was St. Bernard Middle again, and say it's valued at sixteen million, then that ten percent would be a one point six million dollar deductible. But if it is due to a name storm, then we've got FEMA coming in as backup.
Yeah.
If it's not, then it's ours.
This name storm deductible goes off the total value, and it ought to go off the damage, not the total value of the building. That's just my personal opinion. That's how I think insurance companies are kinda rooking us here. It should be based off of the damage, not the total value, right? That's what they, that's what the.
Well, I, I agree with Mr. Warner, but they beg to do.
We don't make the rules.
And if you look at a campus like Sherman High School, that has multiple buildings.
Oh, huge campus.
So it's a percentage of each building on that campus.
Yeah, so it should be all based on the damage, the value of the damage, not the total of each building is my, is the point I'm trying to make.
Personally, I agree with Mr. Warner, but, uh, like I said, we're at the mercy of, uh, the people writing the policy.
Right, I get it. But I, I don't, I don't think we have much of an op- other option but other than to go with, um, F. But I'll let other members have some questions. I'm finished, Mr. Egan. Thank you, Mr. Egan.
Do we have any further questions? Yes?
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Just a clarification. So the difference between E and F is just the all other risk excluded name storms um, is greater in F?
Right, the difference.
Because I'm looking at the total premium per thousand in the five point oh nine, it forces load in the five point two-two.
The difference between E and F in premium is due to that increasing fifty million dollars in all perils coverage, not name storm.
E's a hundred million coverage, F's a hundred fifty million dollar coverage.
So it's, ends up being like sixty-three thousand dollars, I think.
Okay.
For another fifty million dollars of coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll so moved.
I'll second.
We go with, um, column F.
It hurts.
It hurts. Yeah, it does.
It definitely hurts.
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second. No further questions? Please vote your machines. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next week, we can vote on the.
Mr. Zimmer, thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you, Dave. Okay.
I'm up next anyway.
We'll move on to five point two. Ms. Lee Bowman, uh, will you take it from here, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. So agenda, um, five point two, request for permission to advertise for bid. And, uh, Mr. Dave Fernandez is gonna give us.
Yes, okay. Uh, the next several items are permission to advertise by annual bids that we do. First one is official journal for the period July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, an annual bid. We asked for permission to advertise.
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda five point three, request for permission to advertise for, um, for bid for vehicle painting and repairs. Mr. Dave?
As Ms. Lee Bowman said, this is the annual bid for painting and body repairs to mostly to our buses, but also to our other vehicles. Period June first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, requesting permission to advertise.
So moved. I'll second it. May I have a motion to approve them? Um, and, um, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the next agenda is five point four, request for permission to advertise bid for gasoline and diesel and other fluids.
Okay, again, this is the annual bid for gasoline, diesel, lubricating oil, antifreeze and transmission fluid for July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, requesting permission to advertise. So.
Second.
Second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five point five, request for permission to advertise for bid paper cleaning and custodial supplies. Mr. Dave?
Again, this is bid for July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, requesting permission to advertise.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next agenda is five point six, request for permission to advertise for bid bus parts.
Okay, again, this is, uh, annual bid for bus parts, uh, bus repairs, June first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. This one, we are also asking for an option to renew for an additional two-one-year period. Permission to advertise.
So moved. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda five point seven, request for permission to advertise to bid waste disposal.
Okay, this is our, uh, waste collection and disposal, uh, bid for July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. We are also asking the, uh, proposers to include two optional annual renewal for the subsequent two years. Permission to advertise.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Superintendent Notes.
Just a reminder, we have our regular board meeting next week, and prior to that, at five, we're gonna have a little academic games, a reception for our academic games team and their parents, so you'll get to meet them, um, next week before they go off to national competition. I also wanted to just, uh, just mourn here, that next Saturday night at Dockville on the twenty-sixth will be the Nunez Gala from nine to eight at Dockville, and I'm sure that at Nunez, there are tickets to sell if people wish to attend. Uh, you can contact Ms. Lemoine at Nunez, and she'll be happy to supply you, your business, with tickets to the Nunez Gala. And just for our employees, we'll be posting our, um, vacancies for next year. We post them internally. They'll be coming out Monday. And our employees then will have some time to request transfers, maybe within, you know, within our system. We'll take care of that. That'll go on the next couple of weeks. And then ultimately, any openings that we anticipate having next year, we'll hold a, uh, job fair on Saturday, March sev- May seventh, I'm sorry, Saturday, May seventh. With any openings we anticipate, any, uh, teaching openings we anticipate for next year, we will interview potential candidates on, uh, May seventh, both from inside and outside of our school system. Then anything we don't feel will be continuing to recruit over the summertime, and our Teach St. Bernard program will begin on July first for all of those candidates who, um, come prepared, who appropriately demonstrate their knowledge of the content area by passing the praxis test in their content area and going through our interview process will begin. Our new crop of candidates, July first. Things just keep rolling along.
That's it, Ms. Potek? Okay, Mr. Wong?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, you know, once again, our governor is proposing a fifteen hundred dollar a year pay raise for teachers and seven hundred and fifty for our support staff. And, um, I just would hope that our legislative delegation supports that in this coming session.
Touche.
And which is adding to this, to this statement, because what, what is happening, how it works is that the State S E Board has to send over an MFP, which is a minimum foundation program funding formula, has to send it over to the legislature. We had to do that by March fifteenth. So we did that at the meeting last week. It's going to the legislature. We've incorporated into that request the fifteen hundred dollars for teachers and seven fifty, and the seven fifty for support personnel. And the legislature can either accept it or reject it. They can't change it. If they don't accept, if they reject it, then it goes back to last year's formula. But with the formula that the S E Board has sent over to the legislature, we've asked them to hold it until after the Revenue Estimating Conference meets in May. Because if the Revenue Estimating Conference then recognizes more state revenue for next year, then we're asking them to send it back so that we can up that dollar amount from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. Now that really, we need to make sure that our local legislators are on board with that and that they're aware of that plan, and we really would like them to hold out more revenue that's recognized to raise that so that our teachers will get closer to the southern regional average. This is the first time in all the years that I've been, you know, involved here in the central office, and that's many years, that we've had so much difficulty in filling vacant teaching positions. And that, um, many people, you know, were experiencing not only a shortage of teachers in the state locally, but they're, we're experiencing that shortage at the state level and at the national level. So we're looking for good people. We need to compensate them as, uh, they are compensated in other states within our region and get them to that southern regional average. So hopefully, and I'm thankful you brought it up, Mr. Warner, because that is something that I think we all need to make known to our local legislators so that they will be supportive of that initiative. Ms. England?
Yeah, Ms. Dyson?
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Maybe we could, um, ask the legis- our legislative delegation, um, to be supportive of teachers raises and, uh, support personnel raises through a resolution. So if we could maybe get that done for next week's meeting. And also, I wanted to, um, see if we could invite, if it was Tommy Wards, okay? Invite the Sherman High School Chalmers State and National Champion High Kick. And, um, I, I heard of many other teams going, and they said Sherman High is always, they always do so well with that high kick number, and they, they, they won it again in state and national, um, championships. So if they could, we could invite them to either the next meeting or our next, um, committee meeting. And also, if we could, when do we find out about the, our regional winner, student of the year, Mr. Rami Dali? When is that gonna be?
The, uh, state competition and announcement will be April thirteenth. We'll find out.
Okay.
In Baton Rouge at six P M. At the state library. There's a reception area there where that will be announced on April thirteenth.
Well, I would like to put him on the, our agenda in April. So, um, I mean, he, he's won our district, and then he won the regional, and that's, that's pretty, we have a pretty big region with many, many schools, so we're very proud of him, and we want to invite him also to come to the, um, one of our board meetings after we, uh, find out the final results.
He's making our district.
And congratulations to him and his family.
He's making our district shine.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Wong?
Yeah, I just have one other, um, from Ms. Votchay. There's another bill filed that our, uh, retired teachers may be able to come back sooner to give us. Do you think that has much of a chance of making it through this session?
Um, it, we're pounding away, and it has a chance. In fact, I think Edmund's bill has the best chance because it has a sunset clause that as a short-term solution, his bill will allow a retiree to return to work maintaining their benefits and coming back to work for a three-year period, and hopefully will be able to entice more people into the teaching profession. But there are several bills out there, um, that have different provisions. Uh, some will allow them to only, right now, after a one-year waiting period, a retiree can come back and earn up to twenty-five percent of their, um, retirement benefit. Uh, some bills will increase it to fifty percent. Some were trying to get that critical shortage provision put back into the legislation, because it was removed in two thousand twenty. That if we have a critical shortage area where there, we've advertised three times and we cannot. advertised three times, and we cannot find a certified teacher in that area, then we can bring back the retired teacher. One of the, one of the reasons it has like long-term retirement system implications, it has financial implications, and not that that would ever increase their benefit, but part of the thought is it's taking a newer person from coming in and contributing into the system for that long-term financing over time. So there's a lot to it, but right now, I think we're in such a state that those bills have a better chance of passing this year.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done, Mr. Egan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner. I just want to remind everybody about the Special Olympics, that comes on March the 25th at Sherman Stadium. If you haven't been to it, take some time out and go see this, because it's really fantastic. Young athletes, they do their best. Their, their heart's in it. So, so if you can make it, we appreciate it. I think it starts at 9:00.
9:30.
9:30. 9:30 at Sherman on March the 25th. Okay, anything else from board members from Ms. Votchay or any questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Mr. Campbell, second from Mr. Egan. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's move to adjourn. Thank you, goodnight.